Right, right.
For sure that's all.
Good evening and welcome to the August 21st, 2003 rendition of the New Kent County Planning Commission meeting. If you would please rise or stand as you are able for the moment of silence and pledge the flag. Thank you and turn to me, turn with me as we say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you very much. Roll call, Ms. Berry, please.
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
We, next on our agenda, first one for, for everybody is the approval of the minutes for our last meeting, which was July 17th, 2023. Are there any corrections, additions, or anything of note that needs to be made to those minutes?
I'm glad everybody refers to me. I'm pleased to report I didn't find anything, Ms. Berry. Ms. Chair, can I continue, continue with a motion?
Yes, you may.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Looks like you're on a roll, Ms. Berry, for no changes to the minutes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Epstein.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Epstein, I was absent.
Ms. Townsend?
Epstein.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, our next agenda item is citizen comment period. This is period time where you as citizens can address the public, uh, to the planning commission on any item that we look and evaluate except for the items that may be, uh, appears applications tonight. And we have two with Orpax Partners and Journey Christian Fellowship. So I have some names here. If you're speaking to those, let me know. Clyde Thompson?
Speaking to Journey.
I'm sorry?
Speaking to Journey Christian Fellowship.
Okay, thank you. Josh Townsend?
Also to Journey.
Thank you.
Also to Journey.
Lexed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that Andrew? Andrews? Andrews, okay. And Eileen Lex?
The Journey.
Thank you very much. We'll save those for that time period. Anybody else would like to speak citizen comment period? Seeing none, we'll move, close that and move on. Presentations, Ms. Enman or Ms. Ledu? Any presentations?
Thank you kindly. Unfinished business. Okay. Next, I will turn the floor over to Mr. LaRochelle regarding the public hearings tonight. Mr. LaRochelle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have two public hearings before us. Each has been properly advertised for tonight's consideration. Let me take a moment to review the procedures that we will use for tonight's hearing. Each public hearing will be considered separately. Staff will give a brief overview of the hearing that is before us. The sponsor of the case will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. Commissioners will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the sponsors or staff for clarification purposes. I will then open the citizen's comment portion of the public hearing and receive your comments. Sign up sheets are located on desk by the front doors of the admin building. I ask the following. You come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Address your comments to the commission. Limit your comments to three minutes. When the timer sounds, please conclude your remarks. Should there be a representative for a group such as an HOA or church and you elect to have one person come up, that person gets seven minutes to represent the, to speak on behalf of the group. Please note that during the commission, uh, please note that the commission members will not answer your questions during the citizen's comment period, but will certainly take those questions and comments into consideration during the deliber, the deliberation period of the public hearing. Shall we start with these four?
Staff, staff.
Oh, that's. So first public hearing is application ZM dash zero four dash twenty-three, Orpax Partners LLC. Ms. Ledu?
All right. Thank you, sir. I'm gonna have Mr. Vaughn pull up a visual so it's a little bit easier for everyone to see. This is, oh, that's me then. That's the other one. Yeah. I'm getting there. Okay. This is gonna look a little familiar to you guys. But now we're here talking about the 25 acre piece on the east side of the property. So Mr. Martin's here. He's requested the rezoning from C1 to A1 of approximately 25 acres of tax parcel 18 dash 4D. The intent, per the proffer statement and the applicant, is to eventually subdivide that 25 acre piece off of the parcel for an adjacent property owner to build a maximum of one residence on. The future land use map designates this area of the county as suburban housing, and it obviously adjoins the dispatch station subdivision in that area. The application was reviewed by all of our reviewing agencies, and there were no comments or concerns. Like I said, if you have any questions for myself or Mr. Martin, they're both, we're both here this evening. And resolution PC 1123 is before you for your consideration.
Does Mr. Martin want to speak to this?
Yes, sir. Jason Martin. Uh, just coming to you, wanted to, uh, propose subdividing that piece for the, uh, process of being able to, uh, give the White family the opportunity to build their son a home on their, uh, property that they own now. And I don't know if you have any questions for the Whites.
Yeah, 1705, which is the, the large border.
Please come up and speak into the microphone.
Um, I'm Melissa White. We own 1705, which is that large corner that attaches to the green where it says Orpax Edge to the right. Um, I have lived on the property since my mother owns the top corner. Um, she, we used to own the whole piece originally, um, when I was, I think we moved in 1980. Um, and she has since subdivided the top areas out, and we took the rest. Um, but we built our house 25 years ago, and so we've been there and have all of our children, most of them. One is no longer with us, um, on the property. But, um, my son, Carter, intends on building a house on that property. So that was his desire to live there. And there, the driveway goes all the way through our property to that back edge, actually. And so it would just continue on through, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a one or two. And, and if I get asked, Ms. Ledu, come up for a second. There was a proffer that was offered by the applicant that the entry to the property for all motorized vehicles will be through or restricted to tax parcel number 19 dash 3E, which is the, is it Turner Estate or Turner Property? Air's property.
It's Air property.
Okay, okay. But Turner Estate, correct? Or Turner Property?
My mother's name is Turner.
Yeah, yeah. That parcel, okay. Um, I did a little receipt, resea, uh, research and noticed there is an easement through there for the roadway that would serve that family subdivision that occurred several years back. Is the intent of that proffer to make sure that easement is extended all the way to that parcel that the applicant's requesting rezoning to, um, residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. A family subdivision, you have to have a 20-foot minimum easement to access the new parcel. So they would go through that parcel and come, I'm assuming somewhere here where it's dry.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Citizen comments? Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you in the absence of any further citizen.
To help Mr. LaRochelle along, we now close the public hearing regarding this case. Um, I'll entertain a motion or a discussion, but I really entertain a motion, then we have a discussion first. Is there a motion that one of the commissioners like to make regarding this?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Pearson?
Okay. In order to address, protect, and promote public convenience necessity, general welfare, good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC dash 11 dash 23 to forward application ZM dash zero four dash two three to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Would you like to open discussion on that? Or if not, we'll just pass along. Okay. Ms. Thomas? Ms. Butler? Mr. Tiller? Ms. Townsend? Mr. LaRochelle?
No, sir.
Mr. Davis?
No, sir.
And Ms. Rose?
No, sir.
And Mr. Moyer?
No, sir.
Um, I think this is better suited in this fashion than when it's previously presented. I will remind the commission that this not, has not gone to the board supervisors for any vote. That's why it could return to us for reconsideration in this format. And with that, I have no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Epstein.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye. Mr. LaRochelle, the floor is now yours for the second public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now commence the public hearing for application number ZM dash zero three dash two three, Journey Christian Fellowship.
Thank you, sir. You'll notice that this is a dated aerial photo. The property is currently underway with the development. So this is from 2021. It's just to give you an idea of where it is. So representatives from Journey Christian Fellowship have requested the rezoning from R1 to business of approximately 21 acres of land. The property is located at 3020 New Kent Highway and is the location of the Journey Christian Fellowship Church and Sports Park. The property has an existing approved site plan and is under development. The future land use map designates the subject property as Village, and it's bordered by Quentin Elementary School to the west, Quentin Community Center to the south across 249, and several residences and businesses to the east. This rezoning application was reviewed by all county and state agencies, and there were no comments. The agencies had already given their comments during the site plan review process. The applicants have submitted a proffer statement which addresses a lot of future permitted uses of the property that coincide with the approved site plan. I'll introduce Pastor Pulling. He'd like to address the commission. And resolution PC 10 dash 23 is before you for your consideration.
Uh, good evening. Thank y'all for y'all's time. Uh, so the, the, uh, the move to rezon to business, uh, when we first started this, this journey, as I call it, and this mission, I believe it was discussed. Some people even, uh, told us to rezon in the beginning, but at the same time, there was a lot of discussions. A church can, is permitted to go in any zone there is. So we didn't look into it any farther. Uh, but at this time, uh, to further promote our, our ministries with our signs and direct people to us, uh, we feel that zoning business is the best, uh, practice for us. But I wanted to share a little timeline so you know kind of where we're coming from. Um, and, uh, I'll try at the preach. I'll go three, three minutes. I can do that. I can do that. But, uh, uh, first of all, thank y'all for y'all's time. Y'all are not in an easy position at all, and I admire everybody in authority. So, um, but I want to tell you, I've, I've loved this piece of land, uh, since moving to New Kent. Um, and in 2011, Journey Christian Fellowship, we made an offer on it. We found a, a family member out there. We made an offer on it. Um, uh, I offered everything our church had in the bank at the time. Um, it was turned down. It was countered, offered. He wanted to give us five acres of it. I told him I wanted the whole thing, uh, so it kind of ended right there. Uh, but I tried to buy it in 2011. Um, five acres just wasn't enough. Um, in 2018, my friend who is now deceased, Eric Whitlow, uh, called me on the phone. He was riding down 249. He said, hey, the church's land is for sale. And I said, I bet it is, but you know, I know what he wants for it. And he said, well, let me just call. And he called. He called me back. Long story short, we bought it that hour. Um, it's a, it's a dream come true for us. It's a vision come true for us. Um, after closing on that land, I received a letter from the seller, Mr. Tom Chapman, who's now gone home to be with the Lord himself, the owner and seller of land. He, he, I cannot find the card because I've moved since then. He's thanking, he's thanking the church for purchasing the land and expressed how happy he was that the church was the one that would be using his property. This is all God lined up. A month later, I was contacted by then the superintendent of schools and the county administrator. We had a meeting at our church. They expressed an interest in sharing an entrance off 249. As VDOT would only allow one entrance to both those properties, as you know, we're bordered by the school. And really, since we were the first purchaser of the property, we had the first right of way. Uh, therefore, I agreed to share a road with the school, was happy about it, pumped about it. I love schools. I'm a former teacher myself. I taught special education for five years. All my brothers and sisters taught school. Uh, my mom was the first female, uh, security guard in all Chesterfield County public schools. Pretty cool. She was a beast, too. Um, but, uh, so they, uh, so we agreed on that. And I'll just kind of tell you the time, kind of the timeline and what we're about. Um, we agreed to share the road. Uh, later, they asked for 10 more feet of the road be deeded to them. Uh, we agreed to that. Uh, they came back later and asked for a turning lane off 249 of our land. I gave them that. They came back later and asked for more land off Quaker. Uh, I gave them that. Um, you know, and, and here we are seven, excuse me, here we are five years later, about $7 million later, and, uh, we're dying to get our ministry started. And we're dying to get the right signage and everything to point people to our ministries. Um, and, and we're right there. So, um, I remind everybody of this, while we are not a business, we are in the business of giving. We are in the business of serving. We are partners of the county. Our track record speaks for itself. If anybody's threatened by us becoming a business zoning, they haven't looked very long. We do nothing but give. We have always been found palms down, never palms up. Um, we, we are good neighbors. That's what we strive to be. Uh, that's what we'll always be. Um, you know, we, we, we serve the, the community, the schools, small businesses. Um, and if, and if zoning helps us do that, that's what we want to do. Um, we, we believe, and we don't throw any punches about, we believe that the world needs Jesus Christ desperately. That's what we believe. That's what we preach. That's what we promote. And we've never shat away from that and never will. Uh, we believe that as the world gets darker, somebody has to shine the light of Jesus. We believe we've been appointed to do that. We believe that land has been given us to us. That, that story, which is a true testament, which I just told you, doesn't just happen by accident. I mean, it's, it's all lined up. Um, another thing I take great, uh, confidence in is the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. said this about the church. He said, "The church must always be the conscience of the state." Must always be the conscience of the state. It must be the guide and the critic of the state, never its tool." You know, this is exactly what Journey has always been. We've always been about Jesus. We've always been about giving. We've always been about partnerships, sharing, serving. Our track record shows that. Um, I also tell you, we'll always be found on the right side. We won't always be, you won't always agree with it, but we'll be found on the right side according to the Bible. That's, that's just the, the way we work. Um, and something about our ministries and why we need the signs and stuff, uh, our ministries save lives. Uh, they really do. Our, our missions coffee shop has led people to Christ, saved marriages and homes. Man, we've been a part of helping heal addicts. Uh, and our sports ministries, now, if I would invite them, there's no room to even send them in here. Um, I've led kids to Christ in, in uniform on baseball fields. I've seen marriages hit their knees on baseball fields and come back together and ask for forgiveness and be rejoined on a baseball field. So we're not in business, but we're in the business of saving lives. And I mean, that's what I just want to make sure everybody understands. Um, again, our track record shows that. We're, we're great neighbors. We're gonna be great neighbors. Um, and my last statement to y'all is, you know, I think, uh, we're all in this together. Eric County is at a crossroads. We are growing extraordinarily fast and extraordinarily, uh, big and aggressive. And it's y'all's job and the other representatives' job to, to help us kind of maintain that growth and shape that group. Um, if I, if I had any advice, I would say I would grow with the givers. Grow with the servers. Grow with the people who promote Jesus. Go with the people who are gonna be for children, for families, for schools, for small businesses, for community. I'd be aware of the takers. I'd be aware of the, of the big businesses that are here to pillage and take, because that's a different community in itself. And I think y'all know that. So that's my prayer and advice for y'all. Um, I would say too, there's a wrong day out there, and there's a right day. Um, I think our tracker ever proves that we're the right day. And, man, we love this county, and, and we will do nothing but make it a brighter, better place. And that's why we're asking to be rezoned business. That's all I got.
Do I stay up here?
Thank you, Pastor Pulling.
Could you expand a little bit more upon why, why you need the rezoning because of the signage? Uh, you know, I, I, I don't know, I don't know the backstory on, on this.
Okay, so, um, y'all might be to help me with that. I guess the, that beautified New Kent initiative or something changed all the, the sign things or something? Okay, yes, they'll be able to answer that part.
So, thank you. All right. So Amy and then Planning Director. Um, let's see. I guess Mr. Chairman and, and Ms. Rose. So, right now, it's zoned residential, and signage of this nature is not permitted as residential. So having him rezoned or having this property rezoned to business allows them to maintain the signage that they have up on the buildings. So that's the primary reason, um, for this request. It's just to have the signage that they've already placed up on the buildings, which is, we, we have no trouble with the signage as it is.
Yeah.
It's just it isn't permitted under a residential use as it is currently zoned. So that's the only reason we're asking.
So no, no signage that a, a church would put up would be acceptable in R1?
As a residential, zoned residential, correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair? Um, the coffee shop, is that in existence now or being operated now as a coffee shop?
No, just, uh, so just on Sunday mornings right now, as we've been meeting in the parking lot. That'll change this weekend. But as a meeting in the parking lot, it serves the, the, uh, the congregation. But we haven't, we gotta finish the coffee shop to be able to reopen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, does staff have any pictures of the building with the signage on it now?
Does staff have any pictures of the building with the signage on it now?
I do actually have some pictures of it that I could take.
Yeah, so that they have it?
I don't think we have it.
So, they just understand why that... It probably puts more emphasis on why the need for... Okay. Thank you. Start over here, Mr. Pass.
And I can tell you, the sign on the front is the new one. And then they gave us a little coffee cup. The other two have been our signs at our former location for however long we've been there. What, eight, nine years? We just moved them over. Yeah, I didn't know that. I just moved them. And honestly, I didn't know the one on the building had to be approved. I thought just by the road. So, we hadn't even booked one by the road.
Is there intentions for any additional signs? Or is this what we're voting on, is these four signs?
As far as the road goes, I would like to eventually put one by the roadway. But again, that's the application process, and I'll go through that process if I do. Right now, I just want to open. I don't, you know...
Any other commissioner comments? Someone will open the citizens' comment portion. I've got these four names, and there may be more. Is there a representative from Journey that wants to speak for the group? Or is it all individual speakers?
Yeah, that's a tricky question. Yeah. So, I'm actually a... My name is Jared Harker. I'm at 1428 Outpost Road in Lenexa. And I'm also a pastor at Journey Christian Fellowship. So, I speak on behalf of the church as well, representative of the church as well, and as a citizen. That's really why I'm here. Hey, first thing I want to do is make a motion that we get this thing catered. I mean, y'all need... It's dinnertime. Y'all schedule these things during the dinner hour. I don't know how y'all do it. But hey, we do appreciate what y'all are doing. And I just want to share, you know, what do I have, three minutes? So, God gave me three minutes to just really introduce myself to y'all, because I assume this thing's going to go favorably. But I want to introduce myself to y'all and actually personally invite you to our church. That's what God's put me in this community to do as a pastor. And God called my family, my wife, and then now we have four kids. We just had a little girl in February. And God called us here from Amherst County, Virginia, seven years ago to be part of a movement of God, which is Journey Christian Fellowship, to be part of a church that was unashamed to be in the community. It was such a blessing to see this church from afar, to see how God was using this... So many churches, I grew up in church. I was blessed by God to grow up in church. But I've been a part of some churches that were kind of... No offense, but just not vibrant, not growing, not reaching anybody, not loving on the community. You know, one of the great... Actually, the greatest commandment Jesus said was to "love the Lord your God with all your heart, mind, soul, and strength." And he said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." You know, and so as a church, that's why we exist. So, I just want to introduce myself, invite you to our church. Anytime, come to our coffee shop. You know, you'll probably end up on the ballfields with grandkids or something, or kids or whatever. But what drew me to New Kent was Journey Christian Fellowship and the movement that God's doing. And since being here, I've been able to coach with the New Kent Middle School Lions football team, with the New Kent Giants organization, with New Kent Youth Baseball Association, and now through the Ark Arsenal Ministry that God's blessed us with. And I'll just tell you this, as a coach, I just want to reiterate, I've seen God use... It's so cool. Actually, Pastor Billy Graham said that a coach has more influence in a single season than most men will have in their... Than a pastor will have in his lifetime. So, as a pastor, I was like, "Well, I want to tap into that." You know, amen. So, we've seen sports ministries change the lives of young men, young women, and families. I've seen little boys who don't have a daddy in their life look to me as a father figure and come to me with hard questions and come to me for prayer. And I think that's what this county needs. And so, the sign, the rezoning, helps us promote who we are. The signs are already there. And obviously, they'll come down if it's not approved. But it helps promote who we are. And that's what God's called us to be. And actually, I'll share one last thing. The prophet Jeremiah wrote to the exiles of Israel, and he wrote this. He said, "Seek the welfare of the city where I have sent you and pray to the Lord on its behalf." So, God's calling for me and God's calling for us as a church is the welfare of New Kent County. We're about what's good for New Kent. And so, the signs help us accomplish our mission, which helps us do better as a county. So, I thank y'all again. Again, motion to get this thing catered, and I'll come back to more of them, just saying. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ron Steers.
Thank you all for having me. Thanks to the commissioners. Before I make my comments, I just want to thank all the commissioners for a great job you do and what you all do for this county. We certainly appreciate it. I am here to support rezoning Journey Christian Church, and though I am not a member, but voting against rezoning will not affect any of the activities at the church, only the signage. And wouldn't you rather see all these kids out there playing on a ball field and going home after school and getting in the streets on their video games and smoking dope? I'd rather see God at work in our community. The Bible says to train up a child in the way he should go. And when he is old, he will not depart from it. And that's what Journey Christian Church is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. So, we have the other four speakers listed from earlier. Do each of you want to come up and speak? Clyde Thompson is next.
Yes, sir. My name's Clyde Thompson. I'm a resident for 50 years now. Believe that. Born and raised four miles from here. If I speak on behalf as a citizen, but also as a parent of five boys raised in the community and four grandchildren currently being raised in the community. But also speak as someone who came through the community that had broken homes and those sort of things. And what I've realized, there's a lot of good things out there as far as guardrails and a lot of good programs. But only a relationship with Christ will change a life. And those are the things. I've been a member of Journey for now, going on 10 years. Surrendered to the Lord 22 years ago. And what I've come to realize is that also, these things teach us and show us, these guardrails show us things like how to deal with addiction and things of sort. I've been through a divorced family. But it wasn't for the relationship with Christ or brothers and sisters to come alongside me and show me a relationship to have that with Christ, then that would have been broken. It would have just been a repeat customer again. So, those things come to show us how to deal with it. But Christ says that I'll come and remove those things from you. So, anything that gives us the opportunity to promote that, and if it's a simple rezoning to a business, to put a signage out, to when somebody drives down the road and says, "Hey, what's that?" and gets their attention, then I'm all for that and then supportive of that. So, I would just ask that consider those things. It's not a business opportunity for us. It's an opportunity to change lives. And I'm a prime example of that. So, therefore, I know for me personally that without that relationship with Christ, without brothers and sisters to come alongside me... We lost our son five years ago. It was a church family who came alongside me and my wife. It was those that come alongside. So, we don't just see little Johnny on the ballfield playing. We see the broken homes that come alongside, the fathers that have an addiction problem, or the broken homes with the mothers and stuff. Then those that don't have it also need Christ, because no man's good enough to go to heaven without Christ. So, therefore, no matter if they have troubles or not, we're here to do that as well. So, what I'd like to be able to do is just like I said, just support this in any effort you can. But if it's a simple rezoning, then I would ask you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Josh Townsend.
How are y'all? First of all, thank you guys for all that you do for our county. I'm going to read a letter that was written to us from Brian Nichols, superintendent of New Kent County Public Schools. And he writes this. "To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter to express my appreciation for the collaboration between Journey and New Kent Schools. Specifically, I want to share that the Journey Church and Quentin Elementary School have been neighbors during construction for over two years. We have seamlessly managed contractors, deliveries, and trucks coming in and out. Quentin Elementary School has now been fully operational for the past year. We have worked in a partnership that benefits both entities during that time. Journey and Safari Coffee have often supplied coffee for the staff of QES, including staff appreciation events. Both parties have also been flexible with using parking lots to support large events. It is not uncommon for Quentin Elementary Chorus, Concert, or Ceremony to exceed the number of parking spaces available on our property. The principal of QES has repeatedly expressed her appreciation for the flexibility to utilize additional space. The partnership and joint efforts exhibited by both entities have positively impacted our community, demonstrating an exceptional commitment to the betterment of our society. Sincerely, Brian J. Nichols." That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Anders Blix.
Good evening. I had a longer speech prepared, but I don't want to just re-echo a lot of the things that Pastor Greg and the others shared. But you know, Journey has definitely been an anchor in the community and an anchor in my life. This is my wife, my four daughters here. I've been personally a resident of the community since 1990 and worked there in some fashion over the years. I'm a deacon at Journey Christian Fellowship, and I'm the treasurer. And for about eight or nine years, I was the youth director at Journey Christian Fellowship. So, I just ask for y'all's support in whatever Journey wants to do, because I know Journey supports New Kent County in every way possible that we can, along with submitting to the Lord. But I just want to share with y'all this verse that I think will sum up what we want to do and what we'd like y'all's help with. It's from Matthew, Chapter 5, Verses 14 through 16. It says, "You are a light of the world. A city that is set on a hill cannot be hidden, nor do they light a lamp and put it under a basket, but on a lampstand. And it gives light to all who are in the house. Let your light so shine before men that they may see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven." Thank you for y'all's time. I'm going to take the mic to my wife.
Hi, I'm Eileen Blix. When I was five years old, I moved to 3100 New Kent Highway. That's the white two-story house with the screened-in porch up on the hill there. We rented it for 20-plus years from Elizabeth Yates. And her brother was the one that our pastor bought the property from. I've known him my whole life as well, always since I was five. And they lived at 3120 New Kent Highway. When I came here in 1990 as Eileen Wicker, the field was full of cows. And as the years went by, it became an empty pasture with bobbed white quail in it. And then one day, some of the Lipscomb's cows was in there, which was really fun to see. Eventually, the fence came down in our field, and the hockadees fence came down. It was divided in two different cow pastures there. And then the field became soybeans and corn every other year or so. And my sister and I got to play in the center on the hill that was made from the rubble of it all. And we finally got to meet the kids across the way that we wouldn't have had the opportunity to if the field hadn't been turned into agricultural field. And as I grew older, that field became the training grounds that helped me set the New Kent Middle and High School mile records. You can't see it now, but I used to be fast one day. I also hold the cross-country record for New Kent High School and the 4x400 record. And technically, I still hold the 800 record, though it's the indoor record that's listed on the board. I think someone should talk to Spiek about that. And I'm glad my two-mile record that I held when I was here was broken. It was pretty shameful. It was, they needed to be faster. But the training afforded me the opportunity for a scholarship to run for a Division One college. And I earned all-conference in college three times. I won eight out of nine conference championships with my team when I was there. And then I came back home and married my high school sweetheart. We've owned several houses in the county in different places. We brought all four of our daughters back there, home here in New Kent. We did move away for a few years, and then I got sick. And we've tried, but realized we had to come back home. It was home to friends that are like family to take care of us and help us with our daughters and me. And we came home to 3120 New Kent Highway, the house right next door to the white two-story on the hill with the screened-in porch. The way I see it, if anyone truly has any cause to be upset about what's happened there, it should be me. I grew up there. That was my field. And in 33 years, I've seen it be all kinds of things. But all I see now in that field is opportunity. The opportunity for my girls to train in the same field, maybe in softball, to win a state championship, just like our baseball team just did, or field hockey, since they got to be in the inaugural youth teams through the Giants League there, or maybe soccer, basketball, or even volleyball, and win a state championship like my sister did. You can see her picture in the New Kent Athletic Hallway. She's number three.
Ms. Blix, I'm sorry. Can you...
I'm over. Almost there. She also received a scholarship for college. But more than just my own family, I see that city on the hill. I see that light that should not be hidden under a basket or under a bed. I see the opportunity to give back to the community that has given me so much. And I see the opportunity to continue the tradition of a community that supports and builds one another up. And I think we should do what we can to give other children an even better opportunity than I had. And that is through the message that Journey Christian has through Jesus Christ. And if it's as simple as changing a zoning so that we can continue on that mission, then I'm all for it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
That's the final speaker on the... All right, so that closes the public hearing for Application ZM 03-23. Mr. Chairman, turn it back over to you. Thank you, Mr. Laurachel. I will take any motion from the commission.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
In order to address, protect, and promote
In order to address, protect and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare and good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt resolution number PC 1023 to forward application ZM 0323 to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And if you would, if you have any discussion regarding that motion, we'll start with you.
Other than the fact, I think that the reason for the rezoning, you know, certainly just cleans up some, some items that are existing on the site. Certainly it's, still remains consistent with the village concept as far as future land use. So I don't see this rezoning as any negative impacts to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, Mr. Laurachel.
No, sir, no further comments.
Thank you, Mr. Laurachel. Ms. Townsend.
No comment.
Mr. Tiller.
No, sir.
Ms. Butler.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Thomas. Ms. Pearson.
No.
Mr. Moyer.
Nope.
And Ms. Rose.
No, sir.
Thank you. I have nothing to add. Roll call, please. This is a motion, the motion is to recommend a rezoning.
Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Aye.
Ms. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas. Ms. Townsend.
Aye.
Mr. Laurachel.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Abstain.
And Mr. Bennett.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you folks for your presentations. Moving along to the next item on the agenda, it's new business. I have none. And Ms. Kelly, do you have none? Okay. Okay. Moving, moving along chairman's part, I'm going to delay my chairman's report until the commissioners' report. I'll turn it over to Ms. Pearson for the plan RBA report.
I don't have a report. There was no meeting last month.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pearson. And thank you for volunteering for that position. Commissioners' report, and I think we'll start with Ms. Butler. You have anything? Ms. Thomas.
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Pearson.
No.
Mr. Moyer.
No.
Ms. Rose.
Not at this time.
Mr. Tiller.
What's up?
Ms. Townsend.
Yes, I would just like to say I thank everyone here on this commission for their prayers for the loss of my mother.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your remarks there and thank you for representing your district here. And I hope you had enough time to resolve that. Mr. Laurachel.
No, sir.
And before we turn to Mr. Davis, the one thing I wanted to remark is I attended a meeting about a possible application that was regarding a solar installation up in my district along New Kent Highway near the current solar farm. It was part sales and part information gathering by the potential future applicant. There are seeking, possibly seeking what's considered community solar or shared solar. Mr. Laurachel's probably very familiar with those terms, but that it's not solar utility where the solar energy is focused right to a substation and then transmitted. It is going right to the local lines. So there's more to come on that possibly, but they were just see, you know, information gathering with several of the property owners up there. Mr. Davis.
My usual update for the conference of plan update steering committee. Today we did have a Zoom meeting with county staff, Ms. Zenman and Ms. Laduke. And Mr. Bennett joined us as well with EPR and basically to review the, or the, I guess the compilation of information from the, all the public engagements, including the online data that was, that's been retrieved so far. And with looking at mainly now for land use issues and also transportation issues, how we can move forward. We will be, there will be a presentation to the commission, a brief one coming up. We're trying, we're just working the details out on that, but hopefully the September meeting will have something for you so you can stop just listening to me and maybe see something. So I know that'll be more, much more enjoyable, right? But anyway, so we are, certainly we're moving forward, the, with Todd Gordon and Vlad Avrilovich, except for our time for that name. But we are discussing some items as far as how to move forward, how this will look in the, what the, hopefully the finished product will look like. So, so we're going from gathering information to actually using that to hopefully have something substantive that we can include in the next comp plan.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Staff reports.
Mr. Davis stole my thunder.
Oh, sorry.
We don't, it's fine, no problem. As far as public hearing items go, we haven't gotten anything. Today would have been the deadline for the September meeting, so it might just be the comp plan update unless they're not prepared, then we may cancel September. Did you guys have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laduke. Did you rob her fury or something?
I didn't think so.
Okay.
As much time as I spent here today, I thought we had bonded earlier.
Okay. Okay, leave it to you two. Meeting scheduled for the next, I am planning commission meeting is September 18th at 6:30 here. Reminder, it's possibly, does not include any public hearings, but it is information sharing with regards to the comp plan. Ms. Laduke, if you could possibly distribute that information that may be coming from the consultant, I think it's the same information we saw, just so that there, so the rest of the commissioners are on the same wavelength. Okay? I would appreciate that. Other than that, do I have a motion for adjournment? Thank you, Ms. Townsend. It's time, it's 7:20. The meeting is adjourned.
I will, I will probably not be at the September meeting. I've got, I've already booked my flight. I've got an out-of-town meeting and I'm flying out on 8/10.
Okay, no problem.
Can you zoom on there?